For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
I am Ms. Januella Gora, do solemnly swear.
I am Ms. Januella Gora, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Mayor.
Of the Office of Mayor.
In and for the City of Alpena.
In and for the City of Alpena.
County of Alpena.
County of Alpena.
And State of Michigan.
And State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Danny O. Mitchell, do solemnly swear.
I, Danny O. Mitchell, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Councilmember.
Of the Office of Councilmember.
In and for the City of Alpena.
In and for the City of Alpena.
County of Alpena.
County of Alpena.
And State of Michigan.
And State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I, Michael T. Noack, do solemnly swear.
I, Michael T. Noack, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Councilmember.
Of the Office of Councilmember.
In and for the City of Alpena.
In and for the City of Alpena.
County of Alpena.
County of Alpena.
And State of Michigan.
And State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Mine was more than.
Just seem that way.
Good evening, and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, January 6, 2020. Call the order, please.
Hess, here. Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
And Walagora?
Here.
Please rise and applaud.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? I'll do that one again. That would probably be. I think you should mind if I announce. Greg, I want to.
All right.
Greg.
Greg.
Bill? Stop it now. Bill, I'm going to ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda. Do you want me to do it during modifications or at the consent agenda?
Do it now, please.
Okay. I would like to remove the lease agreement renewal with the Performance Locker from the consent agenda to give us an opportunity to discuss. Second. And we can put that down under.
14D?
Just. 14D?
D.
D? D?
D.
I have A, B, C. So it would be D. D is.
Yeah. You can't say D yet.
No. Okay. Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any other modifications? Okay. Approval of the minutes for regular session on December 16, 2019. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. Tonight, with the exception of our workshop, we do allow some interaction there. But otherwise, if you'd like to, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Okay. On the consent agenda this evening, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $158,342.67. B is a recommendation to not waive the penalty as requested for the Diane Bart's parcel. And D is the collection of the 2020 property taxes for Alpena Public Schools. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. No presentations. Only announcement that I have this evening is the introduction of our newest member of council, Danny Mitchell, on the end, and the first official meeting of our new city manager, Rachel Smolinski.
Thanks.
No proclamations or anything. We're going to skip down to communications and petitions. We have a comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR. Fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. Presentation by Straley Lamb and Cransline, P.C. Phil Straley is here. Bill. Bill, yeah? The mic is yours, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Walagora, councilmembers. My name is Phil Straley with the County of Alpena, Straley, Lamb and Cransline. And we're here to talk about financial matters tonight. There's a lot of information, obviously, in that report, 210 inches. I'm going to keep it very brief. I think you've previously gotten a copy of digital version of the audit report. We've also got the bound audit report here. Just before the meeting, I passed a pink sheet. That's my agenda. Helps me stick to my agenda. And also, there should be a letter of communications, those charged with governance. And on the agenda, first of all, we just identify the individuals in our firm that did work on this audit. The city's a big entity. And this audit is what's referred to as a CAFR, comprehensive annual financial report. I'm going to get into that a little bit. It's something that I think you should be very proud of what you do here. I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. But first of all, again, we have the audit of the comprehensive annual financial reports. We have auditor's communication letter. I'll go over that just briefly. Compliance audit. This year, you don't have a federal compliance audit. You have less than $750,000. Therefore, that's separate. Special audit is not required this year. During the year, if any special issues come up, we're always available. And then also, there's certain federal and state regulatory filings that we assist and work with the city on. Under auditor's comments on the audit, before we get into the audit communications letter, I do want to, again, talk about the CAFR and the achievement of the city. This is the 25th year in a row that the city has been awarded this comprehensive annual financial award designation. A CAFR is really a model for transparency. And I think that's important to you as councilmembers, important to the community. But virtually anything that anybody would want to know about city finances is contained in this report that Anna and her staff put together. Again, it's the 25th year. In order to get this award, the report's got to be put together in a certain manner. It undergoes a very rigorous review by an independent reviewer before that award is given to you. So it's not just a matter of filing the financial report with the body. Again, it's going to undergo a review by a specialized reviewer. And just kind of putting it in perspective, this puts you in the top 6% nationwide of financial reports. So it's a pretty heady or elite group that we're able to keep up with communities that are much larger than you. And again, our congratulations to the city for, again, the transparency and the award. If we could maybe now, before we get into the bound audit report, just spend a couple minutes on the communications of those charged with governance. There are certain communications we have to make as auditors to you, the city council, those that are in charge of governance. And on page one of that document, I just want to point out, our responsibility is to simply express an opinion on your financial statements, which we have done and are contained in the bound audit report. Also, I did want to point out the internal controls. Internal controls are the system, how you operate, how things flow through the city's records and accounts. And we do spend a lot of time reviewing those internal controls. They help us decide what kind of and how much testing we have to do during the audit process. On page two of that letter, under, at the top, it's identified as significant audit matters, but accounting estimates, again, there's a lot of very precise numbers in here. Your bank balance, we know exactly how much you had at the end of the year, June 30, in your bank. But in order to complete the report, there's a lot of estimates that are designed to give us numbers because certain things, it's very hard to measure them precisely. For instance, your ambulance fund. You have receivables. Well, some of those receivables aren't going to be collectible, so we have to make an estimate of any doubtful accounts that we think exist in that fund. Also, your pension, your old tab liabilities, there's a lot of estimates that actuaries have to use. So just wanted to point that out. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit? We're pleased to announce that there were no difficulties. There were no disagreements with management. We have a lot of discussions during the audit, but again, no disagreements. And at the bottom of page three, just want to point out, there are some recent pronouncements that have been put out by the Government of Accounting Standards Board. And you can find those in note twenty on page 116 of the audit report. We highlight those in there. I can't tell you, there's a couple of pronouncements dealing with leases, fiduciary accounting, but I really see no significant effect with the city. When it comes to fiduciary accounting, there's not a lot that the city does as far as holding money for other third parties. We find a lot of that, for instance, in school districts. There are a lot of fiduciary funds, but again, I don't really see any significant effects on the city. If we could now go to that bound audit report, I just want to mention that there's really three major portions to that report. There's the introductory section, which covered page one through 28. And for somebody that maybe has a little bit of difficulty, anybody in the community that, again, has a little difficulty filing balance sheets and any statements, they can get pretty swatted. That first part, that transmission letter, the introductory section, tells the reader a lot about the City of Alpena, where it's going, where it's been, what its goals and hopes and aspirations are. So I would recommend people look at that. Also, on pages 33 to 45, there's what's called the MDA, Management Discussion and Analysis. And again, this takes all of the schedules that are found in the financial statement, and it puts it into narrative language, something that probably the average reader will follow and, again, judge and see how the city's done for a particular year. On page 31 and 32, this is where we have what's called our independent auditor's report. I know if I were looking at an audit of a private company, of a governmental unit, this is probably one of the first things in a report that I know to look at. I'm going to be looking at that audit report to see what kind of an opinion the auditor has given to that entity, whether there's any qualifications. And this is what we refer to as an unqualified opinion. Sometimes people call it clean opinion. And generally, what we're saying is that everything in here, we believe, is fairly presented according to governmental accounting standards. And again, I previously mentioned on pages 33 through 38, excuse me, 33 through 45, there's what's called this Management Discussion and Analysis. Again, a very good summary of the financial activity of the city. On page 47, this is a statement of net position. Sometimes people think of this, or sometimes it's referred to as a balance sheet, but it tells you at a certain given point in time, in this case, it's June 30. It tells us what your assets were, what your liabilities were, what your net position was. And on pages 148 through 153, I really won't cover that, but this is where we get into a comparative statement of budget versus actual, and what happened, how much you budgeted, what you ended budget, and how the financial statements ended up. And then on pages 54 through 55, we have a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance of the governmental funds. Your main operating fund is the general fund. And just down below that, I've given you some key numbers as far as the total revenues of the general fund. They were a little over $9.6 million. You had expenditures of $8.9 million. There were other uses where money was distributed to other funds in the city, a little over $400,000. That left you with a positive change in your fund balance of $223,000. I believe last year, it was negative $200,000,000. So quite a turnaround from last year through this year. At the beginning of the year, your fund balance was a little over $2.5 million. This year, it's a little over $2.7 million for your general fund fund balance. And that year-end fund balance represents a little over 29% of the money available for expenditures and other uses. So pretty good position to be in. Compared with last year, where you had 25% of your fund balance, again, comparing it to expenditures and other uses. Right now, you would, going into the year, you would have had about 107 days of operating capital, again, a little uptick from the previous year. Just a summary, I think the city's in a good financial position. I know it's difficult day in, day out, but really with federal and state budget challenges. Again, you did a good job of working with what you have. At this point, I would open it up for any questions that you might have.
Anyone? I do not have questions. Excellent. As always, Mr. Straley, we appreciate you coming in. We'll receive file. No questions from the staff either?
I move we receive and file.
Second.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, unfinished business. This is the second reading of ordinance 19-452, Annual Report to the Council for the Retirement System.
Insisted with council policy, this would not be read again. You just need to motion and vote yea or nay.
I move we approve ordinance 19-452.
Second.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is new business. First under new business is the appointment of Mayor Protem. Entertainer. Nomination or appointment, council. I move we nominate Cindy Johnson to be Mayor Protem.
Second. Thank you.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
And Noack?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is B, Councilmember appointments to boards and committees. We each have a list of our current committees. And Mr. Mitchell has been awarded councilmember Nielsen's committees, which is basically pretty standard when someone changes over. We did have a, we did have a discussion and an agreement, if you will, several years ago about doing like two-year terms if anybody was looking to change. To something else. I mean, I'll start off by saying that I'm fine with mine, with the committees I'm on. I don't know if anybody wants to be on any of the ones that I'm on, like to switch or anything, or anything amongst, amongst council.
I think everyone knows which ones are on my hunt.
Okay. So I'll just.
Is when I'm on there?
Yeah. I'll, I'll start with mine. So currently, I'm on Hunt board, and that's a, that is a non-voting member position on the Hunt board. Intergovernmental Communications, Natural Resources Visioning, Clear Target Market Visioning, the JAL U.S. Policy Committee, and then I'm a sub or an alternate for MacNe and NEMCOG. Cindy Johnson is on the Park Foundation, the Retirement Board, Jail Committee, IG Roads, IG Recycling, Natural Resources Visioning, and Policies and Procedures Visioning.
I would also like to say that Susan was on the Huron Humane Society, and she resigned from that, so I moved, I moved as councilmember. So I represent that.
Right. So that would relieve Mitchell of that. Hess is on the City Property Building Strong Consensus Visioning Committee, MacNe, Medical Marijuana, IG Air and Water Quality, Economic Development Visioning, and an alternate on recycling and Thunder Bay Sanctuary. Mitchell is Dare, Medical Marijuana, NEMCOG, Thunder Bay Sanctuary, Building Strong Consensus Visioning, Clear Target Market Visioning, and an alternate on the, we don't have a board review, poverty. We usually don't anymore, so we don't have that anymore, so that can be struck. Yep. So he's the alternate on Target and Hunt. And Mr. Noack is on the Historic District, Alpena County Central Dispatch, IG Public Safety, Target, Policies and Procedures Visioning, and the Retirement Board. He's also the, on his, that board review, poverty review. You can stretch that.
Is there anything else that we may have missed?
Yes.
What do you?
Because there's the Alpena Art Vision, and I service on that from the council.
I don't recall that one either.
Well, it's what MacNe kind of transitioned.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Are there official positions?
Okay. Okay.
That makes sense. That's probably the best part, isn't it?
The DDA committees?
DDA?
Because the DDA board is.
Yeah. I sit on a DDA subcommittee.
Yeah. That's what I'm wondering, if those need to be listed. Do we kind of just volunteer?
Those are just volunteers, not representing the city, so to speak. On the DDA, you're a volunteer on that? Where on, a lot of these were. Were, well, some of them were bound by the agreement we have.
Okay.
Like Hunt and Target and things.
Sure.
Subcommittees are just kind of volunteer things.
I don't know if you heard, I'm an alternate on Art Vision. Okay.
Whom would I find out when, where, how for the meetings?
That'd be pretty simple. Yeah. I'd give it to our new city manager.
We can take care of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll get you stuff.
Somebody can put a, put an email together. Some of these are only, only meet as necessary. Medical marijuana, that's not a regular standing meeting, is it? I don't think so. I think, looking at ones that he has, Dare, and I'm not sure about NEMCOG, but I know Dare is a regular meeting. Dare's going to be pretty regular, so. And the visioning, they meet as necessary as well. I'm all good with all of the committees. Yeah. I'm happy with the committees I'm on, so, I mean, everybody else is fine. Okay. Okay. We need to, we'll do those separately. Yeah. So. Move as written, I think.
Move as written separately?
I mean, you don't have to read off everything like I just did, I don't think.
Okay. Unless there's a change.
But each one of us has to be voted on separately, that's what I meant.
So I move that Mayor Walagora maintains the committees he's currently on.
Second.
Okay. Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Hi.
I move that, I move that Mayor Protem Johnson be assigned to all the committees as stated.
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I move that the councilperson, Hess, is appointed to the committee meetings as scheduled.
Second.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I move that someone from Noack be on the committee set to you sometime.
Second.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Awesome. Thank you.
We got one more.
One more. I thought we went through one. Nope. One more. I move we approve the committee's assignments to Councilman Mitchell. Did we do Mitchell?
Yeah.
She did me.
Oh, you, okay.
Yep, she did. Rather than skip over me, she just.
Okay. So Amber, you motion for Mike. And then last one's Mitchell. Okay. Your motion in a second?
I motion that, um, did we have a motion?
I did make my.
Oh, in a second.
Yep.
I thought you did.
Okay. Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
And Noack?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Everybody needs to be appointed, they need to answer. Thank you. Next up is the first reading of ordinance 20-453, Taxation Definitions.
Just a brief background, recently, when we were trying to figure out the Alpena Bio Refinery or Ramble Bio issue, the phrase substantially delinquent came up. And we had not established a written policy or written definition for it. So even though in our minds, we thought we knew what it meant, we had not reduced it to writing. So thought it was important that we pass an ordinance under the taxation session, or section of our ordinances and specifically define what it is. So this is ordinance number 20. So this is ordinance number 20-453. It's an ordinance of the city of Alpena, Michigan, amending Chapter 86, Taxation Article 1 in general, by addition of Section 1 definitions, being ordained by the municipal council of the city of Alpena, state of Michigan, as follows. Section 86-1, Definitions A, taxpayer is defined as any individual person, business, corporation, or other entity that owns property to be assessed and taxed, whether real or personal, in the city of Alpena. Subsection B, the term substantially delinquent for purposes of real or personal property taxes owed to the city of Alpena shall be, shall be defined as any taxpayer as described in Section 86-1A, who has at least one preceding tax year behind on March 1st for payment of either their real or personal property taxes. Sections 82-6 to 86-30 will continue to be reserved. And the effective date is the provisions of this ordinance shall take effect 10 days after being adopted by the municipal council and duly published.
And am I correct in saying that that, that definition is the same now as the county's? The county had it and we did not. So it just makes it a little bit smoother. So we'll look to that at our next regularly scheduled meeting for approval. Excuse me. Thank you, Bill. Next up is D, which would be the Performance Locker Renewal. Thank the Stutzmans for staying, and they probably thought they were going to be out of here about 25 minutes ago. Go ahead, Rich, if you have a presentation or reading for us.
Performance Locker has leased a former Michigan Kewas warming shelter for the past five years to operate their business from the facility. During that timeframe, we have had no issues with Performance Locker's operation, and they have donated the $1,000 per year to the city as outlined in the previous lease agreement. Prior to this renewal being developed, city staff did meet with Casey Stutzman at Performance Locker to discuss clarification of the terms within the agreement. Result from those discussions, the following modifications were made. The term of the agreement, and Bill so pointed it out to me, higher math, and I just must not get along because it's six years, actually around six years instead of five years, being from January 1st of 20 through December 25th of 2025.
Now, are you thinking of Christmas or because the lease itself says the 31st?
Yeah. It'll be the 31st.
It'll be the 31st. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The first year of the renewal would remain at $1,000 per month, which is the same rate as year five of the previous agreement. Each subsequent year would be increased based on the annual proposal a rate of inflation index published by the state of Michigan in October of each year. The new rate shall be for the following January through December timeframe. Any increase in rent shall be capped at 2% per year. An annual donation shall be presented to the city of Alpena for Michigan Kewas Park improvements with the amount to be $1,000. This amount can be reduced by 50% based on Performance Locker's community participation, such as, but not limited to sponsoring a community parade, community events, et cetera. This was previously a flat $1,000 amount. The reference to Performance Locker operating a cross-country strip trail within the park was deleted, as this proved to be an infeasible option. Based on our meetings with Performance Locker, the timeframe for any future improvements to Michigan Kewas, we did look at the Michigan Kewas Park master plan. Not a complete document, but it's far enough long that we could look at it and see there really wasn't anything specifically targeted for the warming shelter in the near future. So this timeframe for this lease agreement would not impact that. If something changed, there is an escaped clause within the agreement that we can, we can get out of. As my recommendation, as city and chair of the city council, approve the lease agreement with Performance Locker for the use of the warming shelter building. The terms would be as outlined in the attached lease agreement. And Casey Stutzman is here.
I, um, I asked to have this removed just for some discussion. I have, the Stutzmans have been great, what is it?
Tenants.
Tenants. I didn't see. That's why I'm not here. Great tenants of the, of that facility. And I, I haven't had any issue with them being there or being in the park as far as the lease agreement goes. The only issue that I had was the clause about the, about the the annual $1,000 reduction, possible reduction based on their participation. I just felt that, that that was something that I really didn't want the city government to be necessarily involved in whether, I mean, we certainly appreciate the fact that, that Casey took over the 4th of July parade when the Chamber of Commerce announced that they didn't want to do it anymore. It was just absolutely fantastic. But in my opinion, that it's just, that's not, that's not a function of this, of city government. I would just assume that either continue to be a flat rate or now that they're paying a regular, a regular monthly installment on their, basically a monthly lease. I, it doesn't matter to me whether it just goes away. If they would like to continue donating to the, to the Michigan Kewas Park Fund annually, that, that's fine with me. I just, I really don't like the stipulation of based on their performance throughout the community, because then we're left to, to determine whether that was enough. Or if he doesn't do the pretty anymore, but he does something else, then we, then we're kind of left to try, trying to decide whether, whether it was comparable or anything. So I would rather it just didn't exist, to be honest with you. I can understand your point of being just kind of a clean contract or lease agreement between the two entities, you know, speaking on that, because there is a possibility. And while I still do appreciate all of the work that they've done for our community and so many participated in that parade, I thought it was fantastic. But I agree. I think, I think it really needs to be a little bit cleaner. Just, you know, we've run a lease out that agreement or lease out that building, and it should be clean, just in that pack.
Yeah. I agree.
Do you feel that the annual fee is kind of required in the, in the contract at all?
Well, the $1,000 donation, that, that was something when Casey Stutzman and Performance Locker first approached the city about leasing that facility, that was something they presented to us, that they wanted to give back to the community and to Michigan Kewas Park. So we set that up, that they would give us that $5,000, which they have done. Here recently gave us that money. And it is earmarked for improvements at Michigan Kewas. But it's not, it's not something that we initiated back with the lease agreement we first started.
Yeah. I understand.
Casey's got some comments on it, and I mean, that would...
Do you want to? I mean, is that a...
Okay. To address the council?
Please. Yeah.
Should I make a call?
Yeah.
So where that conversation started is when we decided to put that within the lease. We were obviously a new business. We were just starting. It's extremely important for us to be stewards of the community and the park that we get to operate and use. And it's very important for us as a local business to be able to invest back in the community. The reason the conversation came up to have some sort of wiggle room with it moving forward was the 4th of July parade takes a fair amount of time and financial resources. And we weren't doing that when we started this first agreement. Also, kind of looking at, you know, our grand budget, what we can handle while still staying viable and maintaining our employees in terms of what we can give and what needs to go back into the business and knowing that the rent was going to potentially increase. So that's where Rich and I came to that agreement, kind of a happy medium. If it places the council, I'd be fine. If you wanted to do it at a flat rate, we know that we could easily do $500 a year opposed to the $1,000 and then obviously continue with the parade and everything else. As that donation is still extremely important to us, we just wanted to make sure that the numbers made sense and that we were still not, you know, cutting off our nose by your face.
Yeah. Well, why don't, I mean, I'm just going to make this suggestion. It's up to you. Why don't we make, why don't we leave the, the donation as, as what it, as what the term is? It's a donation. If you would like to continue that, if you're, if, if you'd like to do that, whether it's 500 or 1,000, that's going to be a clear donation from, from you and your business to the city of Alpena, aside from the rental agreement itself. And as long as that's not a no, a go-no-go for you.
No, no. That's 100% not going to be...
Should we be listing donations of the city lease?
That's what I'm saying. So if we just take the donation part right out of the lease altogether, and, and that way, if you want to come every year or wait for four years and see how you're doing, and you want to present something to the Michigan Kewas Park Fund, why don't we just do that? That would be cool. So if that's fine, everything else in the lease was fine with me. Bill, I always ask, is there anything in here? You're all good with everything?
Other than the, the end date.
The end date?
You should just say, "end date."
Said the leasing. All right. So why don't, so Rich will, Rich will fix the end date and take that.
I just want to clarify.
Once we vote on that, I mean, I want to make sure that we...
The, the end date would then be December 31st of 2024. And we have a five-year timeframe.
Okay.
And the, any reference to the $1,000 donation will be removed from the lease agreement.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure I understood the exact purpose.
And with that said, I think we can vote on it tonight. With that being said, and then you just let me know.
We'll get it, we'll get it amended and modified. We'll get it back from Casey to sign it.
That sounds good. I move we approve the lease agreement with Performance Locker as presented, amended, and modified.
Second.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I, could I do that? So this is, uh, this is our $5,000 donation.
It's got a check.
We're in Alpena.
Yeah. It was continuing when you said yes. So, uh... I'll call the bank and you have to pay some...
There, Bill, you're writing them.
Only get in this one.
Oh, yes. Can I...
Yes. Please. Bring your team up.
As long as you don't block me in the background.
I was going to say, those, support team has been waiting a long time.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's Indiana. Indiana.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I take that, too.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry. I think you're up to recess, right? All right. We are at our recess. It'll take a couple minutes, Greg, to come back for the workshop.